Welcome everyone to the City of Newburgh Planning Commission Meeting for April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four. At this point, I'd like to call the meeting to order and get a roll call.
Jason Dale?
Here.
Laney Quinn, here. Abby Seitz, here. Chris Wright?
Here.
Lyndon Newton Curtis?
Here.
Mike Griffiths?
Here.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to open the record for any public comments, for any, uh, anything that is not on the agenda for these, for this evening. Seeing none, hearing none. Do we have anyone on Zoom that fits that description?
No one has their hands up.
Okay. Very well, moving on to the consent calendar for the, uh, February eighth, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission meeting. Uh, regarding passing the minutes from that meeting, do I have?
Planning Commissioner Wright moves to approve as written calendar many meeting minutes for February eighth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Very well, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Very well, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The consent calendar meeting minutes for, I'm sorry, the meeting minutes for the, uh, February eighth, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission is approved. Moving on, we have two quasi judicial public hearings in front of us, and I understand from staff that they may likely be a continuance for those, but we'll go to whatever presentation they have for us at this point.
Thank you.
The, uh, as the staff, chair, as the staff present these items, they'll kind of discuss what those continuances that are being requested are and explain why we're asking for them. But thank you very much, and hand it over to our case plan.
All right, so good evening.
I think, uh, I think that we need to do abstentions by us and the other meetings.
Oh, uh. Even in the event, okay, fair enough. At this point, I'll call for abstentions, bias, expertise, contact, and objections to jurisdiction from any Planning Commission members? No, no? Okay.
Uh, I believe your student commissioner, because there are new commissioners.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta speak up loud. I don't get hints.
Sorry. Um, my name is Abby Seitz, and I would like to disclose to the members of the Planning Commission that I am related to a City of Newburgh staff member who assists the Planning Commission. My relationship with the staff member does not present a conflict of interest or buys my opinions. I have and will continue to avoid ex parte contact related to the Planning Commission issues. I have not, nor will I, have any discussion of applications that the Planning Commission are to review.
Thank you. So, uh, just for background for the Planning Commissioners, we're not here for the February meeting. Uh, we, uh, kind of talked, talked it over amongst ourselves between myself and staff and the sites, uh, about her relationship, and so we figure if we read it once to everyone, they're also advised, and it's a continuing, uh, declaration of her potential bias, and keep that in mind for all future meetings of which she will be attending. Everybody understanding and, uh, everyone good with that? Seeing a lot of nodding heads, that's good. Okay. Now, uh, Commissioner Seitz, you got that out of the way. Now, will you please read the, the, um, announcement we need to read for that?
ORS?
Speak up a little bit, please.
ORS one nine seven point seven six three requires certain statements to be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed. This means that we must advise you of the standards that must be satisfied by the applicant prior to our approval of an application. The planning staff will list the applicable criteria during his or her presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony or evidence toward their criteria stated by the planner or specific cities or state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to criteria. Any issue which might be raised in appeal of this case to the Land Use Board of Appeals must be raised in person or by letter at the local level prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states that the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond. This part of the law is also known as the raise it or waive it requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you cannot bring it up at the Land Use Board of Appeals. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or any other issues relating to the proposed conditions of the approval in enough detail to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing on an application, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission will grant such a request through the continuance or extension of the record.
Thank you, Ms. Seitz. Very well done. And we're moving on to staff now that we've gotten that out of the way.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is James Ngone, one of the assistant planners, um, here to present the staff report for annexation twenty-three zero 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 one, the annexation of nine eighteen South Wynewski Street. I enter the staff report and the supplemental memo that you received into the record, as we'll discuss in the process. Section, we are opening the, uh, public hearing tonight, and then staff's recommendation requests that you continue the hearing until the May ninth meeting to provide, um, required notice time to the State Department of Land Conservation and Development. All right. So this is an application for the quasi judicial annexation of nine eighteen South Wynewski Street, tax lot R thirty-two twenty C D oh seventy-one hundred, which is approximately point seven acres in size. The applicant is Daniel Danicich, and the owners are Timothy and Danielle Richardson. The annexation is to connect to the public sanitary sewer system. Property is currently designated medium density residential in the city's comprehensive plan, and the applicant is proposing the R two medium density residential zoning district to be applied. The property is also within the airport overlay subdistrict and the stream corridor overlay subdistrict. The adjacent zoning districts are R two medium density residential to the north and R two R D medium density residential in the riverfront district to the west. The site is served by existing utilities, uh, three-quarter inch lateral connects to an eighteen inch water main in South Wynewski, and a fifteen inch stormwater pipe, um, is with, has an inlet and is in South Wynewski. Twelve inch stormwater pipe also runs across the southern portion of the property. Um, a ten inch sewer main is in South Wynewski Street, and an eight inch main runs east-west across the property. An over line utility, overhead utility lines are present. The application was deemed complete, um, sent for agency referral review and notice mailed and posted by the applicant in February. Additional notice was placed in the Newburgh Graphic and in four public places on March twenty-eighth for this hearing. A post acknowledgement plan amendment notice was submitted to DLCD on April third to meet the thirty-five day notice ahead of the Planning Commission's May ninth meeting, as noted in the supplemental packet you received tonight. Tonight, the Planning Commission will open the public hearing on the application, and staff is recommending that the hearing be continued to that May ninth meeting. The recommendation of the Planning Commission is scheduled to be presented to City Council on May twentieth. Moving to the criteria for quasi judicial annexation, the subject property must be within the urban growth boundary and contiguous to city limits, which this property is. The current use of the site with an existing single family dwelling complies with the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan designation of medium density residential, and a re-designation of the plan map is not being requested with the application. The property is approximately point seven acres, which is smaller than the code's threshold for annexations to be required to provide high density land, and therefore this criterion is not applicable. An adequate, adequate level of urban services must be available or made available within three years from the time of, um, annexation. This includes municipal wastewater and water service. The subject property is already served by public water and is requesting annexation to connect to the existing public wastewater system in South Wynewski Street. Approval is being conditioned on the applicant providing a recorded easement for the existing wastewater line running across the property, and that the new connection made is made into the wastewater main in South Wynewski Street and not, uh, the line running across the property. Secondly, adequate urban services also include roads that have an adequate design capacity for the proposed use and projected future uses. The subject property has frontage on South Wynewski Street, and approval is being conditioned on dedication of additional right of way to provide thirty feet, uh, from the roadway center line, and that the applicant sign a non-remuneration agreement for future required improvements along the frontage. The subject property is within the twelfth and Valley Fire and Rescue, Chahalem Parks Recreation, Newburgh Dundee Police Department, and Newburgh School District Service Districts. These agencies were provided a referral review notice, and no comments were received. Adequate services could not be provided to the subject property. The applicant provided adequate information for the city to make findings that demonstrate compliance with the previous applicable criteria. Given the existing development and that urban services are available within a three-year timeframe, um, the, uh, requirement that City Councils, uh, may annex properties where those services are not available is not applicable. The Development Code outlines procedures for quasi judicial, um, annexation to require a public vote. However, passage of Senate Bill fifteen seventy-three, um, added language to ORS two twenty-two one eleven that preempts Newburgh's requirement annexations go to that public vote. The property being annexed must meet certain criteria, including being within the urban growth boundary, being subject to the Comprehensive Plan, being contiguous to the city limits, and that the application meets the Development Code criteria, and this property and application meet those requirements. The Development Code lists application requirements, including written consent and a Measure forty-nine waiver. The application materials included the land use application, annexation consent form, a waiver of expiration of annexation consent, and, um, the staff report that they received included a condition that the applicant would submit the Measure forty-nine waiver, um, that we received that waiver tonight. Additional application requirements, um, include a legal description and boundary map, a vicinity map, a general land use plan, a statement of the development concept, annexation fees, the method of financing to provide public facilities, and a narrative of the potential positive and negative effects of the proposed development. The application materials provided these additional required, uh, elements, um, and then concurrent with application for annexation, the property may be assigned additional development reviews, um, such as a planned, you know, development, but no additional development is being proposed with the annexation, so that, um, qualification is not applicable. Moving on to the Comprehensive Plan and zoning designations, the subject property is currently, uh, designated a medium density residential in the Comprehensive Plan, and the applicant has not requested a re-designation from that existing plan designation. The Development Code assigns corresponding zoning district classifications to, um, existing Comprehensive Plan designations, and, um, the Development Code indicates that the appropriate zoning for the medium density residential designation is either R two or R four. The applicant has requested that the subject property be classified into the R two medium density residential zoning districts. The R four zoning district is the city's manufactured dwelling district, and because the subject property is already developed with a single family house, the R two is a more appropriate classification. The applicant has not requested a zone change from the classification listed, um, previously, so, um, the ability to, uh, apply for a concurrent zone change application is not applicable. If a zone change had been requested, the Development Code indicates that it would be denied if the annexation application was denied, but because no zone change is, is requested, this is also not applicable. The Development Code requires coordination with affected private and public agencies, including Yammell County, Chahalem Parks Recreation District, Newburgh School District, Northwest Natural Gas, Portland General Electric, among others. A referral review was circulated to these and other agencies on February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Comments, uh, received are incorporated into the findings where applicable. While no development is proposed with the annexation application, the site will be located in the city's Airport Overlay Subdistrict, and approximately five hundred square feet of the southeast portion of the site, um, is, uh, within the stream corridor overlay. Um, so the procedures and limitations of these overlay districts may be applicable to any future development on the site. Finally, um, no, uh, finally, new utility lines are to be undergrounded. However, no new lines are proposed with this application. Existing lines shall be placed underground when they are relocated or when a developed area is annexed into the city. Because existing overhead line, utility lines are present on the site, approval is being conditioned on those lines being undergrounded. The applicant may request an exemption to this undergrounding requirement if the cost is extraordinarily expensive, if physical factors make the undergrounding extraordinarily difficult, or if existing utility facilities in the area are overhead and not likely to be changed. No request has been made to the director at this time, so this provision is not applicable. So staff's recommendation is to continue the public hearing for annexation twenty-three zero 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 one until a time, a certain date on the May ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, meeting of the Newburgh Planning Commission. So there was a lot there. I'm happy to go back to any slides if the commission has additional questions.
Okay, uh, just to clarify, the city staff is requesting the continuance, not the applicant, or is it, or is it, uh?
City staff.
City staff, okay.
The applicant has concurred.
Okay. And, uh, you're aware of the hundred and twenty day limitation, and it's been taken care of?
Yep.
Okay. Do we have any commissioners with questions for staff at this point?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Commissioner Wright, um, on, not that it has to do with this, it might be a typo on, okay. On the legend, page six of one hundred and fifty-seven, typo in the upper right northeast corner. Is it CSP eight seven one six or eight six one seven? Your instrument of deeds.
Could you say again, could you say again which, um, corner?
Here?
These two?
These numbers and this number down here, upper right northeast. Is CSP eight seven one six? Or is it supposed to read eight six one seven like the legend? And then? There's another one, number four, exceptionally instrumental of record. It's just those two. It's not gonna be on our, on this part of the property, but it is a document, and I want to make sure the, that's corrected.
So, Commissioner, because that is part of the application materials that were submitted by the applicant, I would actually suggest that if you'd like clarification on that, we can let the applicant do that during their comments or in response to that question, if you'd like.
Wonderful.
And I think I'll add that, um, that, um, map was added, uh, for kind of the overall site, um, the description, but the, the, the legal description and survey is, is in the attachment, um, in the exhibits, as opposed to the illustrative applicant, applicant's map there.
Any, any further questions for staff? Okay, hearing none. Um, I don't have any blue sheets on this, other than the applicant, and the applicant, as far as I'm aware, is just going to say, okay, we're continuing. So I don't see the need to open the public record at this point for anything that's just going to be continued, and, and, uh, if anyone does have any comments or anything to add, uh, between now and the, uh, next meeting, or when this is continued to, uh, May, um, should that be the way Planning Commission votes naturally? I'm not, uh, presuming anything. Um, but, so at this point, would we like to get a motion for a continuance?
Planning Commissioner Wright moves to continue Planning Commission Resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash three nine two, A N X twenty-three dash zero 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 one, annexation of nine one eight South Wynewski Street to seven P M, May ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, meeting of the app, of the, uh, Planning Commission meeting to provide for the required notice time to the Department of Land and Conservation Development required by ORS one nine seven point six one zero.
And at seven P M at the Public Safety Building? Okay. Thank you. Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Very well. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Jason Dale?
Yes.
Laney Quinn?
Yes.
Abby Seitz?
Yes.
Chris Wright?
Yes.
Lyndon Newton Curtis?
Yes.
Mike Griffiths?
Yes.
Very well, motion passes. The annexation of nine eighteen South Wynewski Street continued till May. Thank you very much for attending the meeting tonight, and we'll see you next month. Moving on, we have another quasi judicial meeting or hearing about, uh, our recommendations for approval of Kalina, Kalina Springbrook Subdivision Phasing Plan and Amendments to the Springbrook Master Plan. Staff? Oh, um, I'm sorry. We need to do, uh, abstentions, bias, expertise, contact, expertise, contact, objections to jurisdiction. Hearing none, seeing none, and we need to redo the legal announcement. Once again, with the stage.
ORS one nine seven point seven six three requires certain statements to be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed. This means that we must advise you of the standards that must be satisfied by the applicant prior to our approval of the application. The planning staff will list the applicable criteria during his or her presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony or evidence toward the criteria stated by the planner or other specific city or state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to criteria. Any issue which might be raised in an appeal of the case to the Land Use Board of Appeals must be raised in person or by letter at the local level prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states that the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision maker and its parties an opportunity to respond. This part of the law is also known as a raise it or waive it requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you can't bring it up at the Land Use Board of Appeals. Failure of the applicant to raise a constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of the approval in enough detail to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing on an application, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission will grant such a request through the continuance or extension of the record.
Thank you, Ms. Seitz. Staff?
Jeremiah Cromie, Associate Planner, for the record. I just wanted to make sure that commissioners got the supplemental memo that was sent today. It should be on your chair. Uh, you're all nodding your heads yes, so that's good to know. Uh, thank you, Fay. So, this is a, basically a two-part, um, request. So, this is for file number M I M D three two three dash zero 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 three, which would amend a phasing plan for the Kalina at Springbrook Subdivision, and then M I S C three two three dash zero zero one, amends the Springbrook Master Plan Development Matrix, which is a subset of land use regulations regulating the Springbrook District itself. So the applicant is Polish Homes, uh, currently owned by Aspen Way West. Uh, the previous subdivision was approved under order number two thousand and twenty-three forty-four and ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three twenty-nine fifteen. Uh, I'll give you a map here of the location, uh, and the zoning for these amendments is Springbrook District Low Density Residential District. The applicable criteria for the phasing modifications is municipal code fifteen point two three five, land divisions fifteen point three two six, Springbrook District, and the order number two thousand and twenty-three forty-four. And then for the master plan matrix, it's at Springbrook District and fifteen point three two three six, sorry, three two six, and then the public improvement standards of fifteen five oh five, comprehensive plan, statewide planning goals, and then the previous order and ordinance. So the location of the subdivision here is just west of Hess Creek, north of Mountain View, and I'm not sure this laser pointer works. So Villa is right here. And then part of the subdivision also includes a bridge across Hess Creek. The zoning for that subdivision is Springbrook District Low Density Does, Low Density Residential. So on the left here is the currently approved phasing plan, and on the right is the proposed phasing plan, the, I'll go through the changes on the next slide, but if you'll notice, they added one, based one point five for the roundabout traffic signal, and then the other changes, the next slide, it's hard to read. So it splits an open space tract, the original tract G and the two lots in phases one and two, adds phase one point five, and then it splits the East Mountain View Drive improvements between phase one, also including one point five, and then three for better timing of their stormwater facilities. It renumbers the lots, um, but the overall lot designation is essentially the same, other than that tract G, and then it provides clarification on what adjacent improvements to the roadways would occur. So here is the currently approved phasing map. Uh, as you notice, here's tract G over here. The, the currently proposed one, um, it's hard to see on the bottom. So tract G was split into two here, and then phase one point five down here between halfway between sent about roughly your center street on the left-hand side, and then Villa Street where the roundabout or traffic signal would be. Uh, and phase one is here on the right-hand side, and phase three is on your left. So the findings, you can find in exhibit A in your staff report. Uh, as I mentioned, only one law is changing locations, and approximately four hundred and twenty lots proposed, uh, well below the ten percent requirement for a minor modification. Uh, the lot renumbering was not consistent with the original plan and conditions, uh, so there's a recommended condition of approval to deal with that. Uh, we recommend a type one approval to reflect the new lot numbers that have been proposed. Uh, the original proposed timing of phases was pushed back a year, and there's five conditions related to it, and exhibit D. And then the second part of this is they are proposing to amend the Springbrook Master Plan Development Matrix. So on the left-hand side, we have the entire Springbrook District, and all the proposed regulations only apply to the Springbrook District Low Density Residential, so this lighter yellow. So all of this, so, uh, not just including the current subdivision, but also to the East of Hess Creek, as well as way over here off of Crestview and Springbrook's here. And then most of the, the matrix proposals only apply west of Hess Creek, so that's the shaded area here on the left, or the right of the slide, but I'm not aware. Left-hand Hess Creek there. So the proposed changes to the matrix in Low Density Residential District to, would allow middle housing lots to have a many, minimum twenty-foot lot frontage. This is the only one that apply outside of the west of Hess Creek and their current proposal. The rest of these are all west of Hess Creek, um, so it would change the design standards currently applied to detach quadplex developments to all middle housing. It's currently, it just says quadplex, and then their other proposal is to reduce driveway separations for quadplex and duplex lots to twenty feet, and that's the, um, supplemental talks about that today. The other request is to allow shared driveways to have a twenty-four foot wide access and utility easement with a sixteen foot wide paved surface. The original requirement was twenty-five feet with a twenty-foot wide paved surface, and then the rest of it's just to fix some clerical inconsistency. See, here's from the last update. So this shows the, where the current requirement is, uh, the current lot frontage says for thirty-two feet, except for twenty feet for attached dwellings, that attach is changing to middle housing. I'll have the slide in a minute. Um, the driveways, and this would be for all of it, it's currently living in the Springbrook Master Plan, and they're requesting the twenty feet for that. And then west of Hess Creek, the driveway separation is twenty-two feet. So this is from the municipal code and then the order and ordinance number with the, where the current requirement is, the request is for twenty feet, which I'll talk about in a minute. And then shared driveways, twenty-five foot with the twenty foot, and then the conditions of approval, and like I said, the twenty-four with the sixteen. So this is a drawing of the So, this is a drawing of the applicant's proposed quadplex configuration. Uh, it's probably a little harder to read up there. Try and highlight it here. So, this is the twenty feet between the driveway separations. And this would be twenty-four feet with the dash lines there, kind of hard to see. And then the shaded part would be the sixteen-foot uh, paved surface. And the three-one configuration they have proposed. This is the actual master plan, what what their proposal looks like. Uh, as I mentioned, the middle housing there, and then like I mentioned, this for west of Hess Creek, they changed the word to middle, from quadplex to middle housing. And just so everybody's familiar with it, middle housing is your duplexes, your triplexes, your quadplexes, cottage clusters is what middle housing is defined as. Uh, the language here is just cleaning up some language that was old and wasn't consistent. And then the two new ones, the shared driveways to the, or the separation for the driveways to be twenty feet. And then the twenty-four foot with the sixteen foot path. The findings for that are found in exhibit B. Um, the proposed lot frontage of the twenty feet for middle housing gets greater flexibility for housing in the city and potentially increasing housing stock. Uh, shared driveways can be done with the sixteen-foot wide paved surface. Eight feet is required for each vehicle to pass each other. And the proposed driveway separation of twenty feet for the quadplex dual slots. Staff does not believe it preserves on-street parking as applicant has stated. Um, you'll see the memo from them saying they think they can work, make the twenty-two foot work. So, we did recommend denying that portion of the matrix request. And then there's three conditions related to that, including, um, making sure they have no fire parking signs and contacting TVFR. So, staff recommends, uh, hearing, the continuance of the hearing until May first. The applicant did request a May first twenty twenty-four special planning commission date uh, to allow for completion of the notice to Department of Land Conservation Development. So, during the process, staff was made aware and and came through with what we believe was a comprehensive plan. Because the Springbrook master plan is part of the comprehensive plan that are required noticing to the State Department of Land Conservation Development. Even though our code is not super clear on how it's supposed to be handled, um, we did have contact with the state. They agreed with us. Um, and so it was sent to the state on March twenty-seventh. And so that is the reason for the requested continuance. After the continuance, staff does recommend approval of the resolution um, with the attached conditions of approval and denying that one request. And any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Wright?
Um, okay. On. Okay. Staff recommends or has an opinion that twenty-foot lot frontage will promote some more housing options and flexibility in design. But they noticed, uh, that townhouses are attached duplexes is what they first submitted. Now it goes to multi-housing uh, wording, correct? Um, and it is not attached but detached, correct? All of these submittals for the map. Um, and I have concern that, uh, for one, our matrix. Okay, for section. All right. Ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash eight eight nine, middle housing. This is attachment. I think, uh, middle housing attachment on the Springbrook master plan. And according to our R one, it's per conditional use review, right? Um. So, what actually is a minimal lot size that you guys are requesting with the twenty-foot easement? And with that, if you have twenty feet frontage and you start taking, um, a few of those categories, twenty-two feet, thirty and thirty-two. If you took took those properties and after the fact if this got passed and then they, uh, rewrote some of those plans for twenty feet, it could result in three categories of an additional more than a hundred so houses. So, what's the guarantee here that's only four hundred and three or now four hundred and twenty lots?
Thank you. So, I can clarify, four hundred and twenty lots includes the open space tracks. So, I, I think what you're getting, I'm not sure I I fully understand. But the twenty-foot lot frontage would be for middle housing, which like I mentioned duplex, triplex, quadplex cottage cluster is what they're requesting. Right now, the way they proposed it would be for the entire Springbrook District Low Density, which could apply outside this subdivision. Um, I think your question about the previous ordinance, the middle housing ordinance, the one you referenced in twenty twenty-one, I think it was eight eight nine, was when the state required us, the city, to adopt standards that allowed middle housing in our single-family residential districts. So, as far as the lot frontage goes, if it's not middle housing, it it all applies to this matrix. So, if they were to do single-family under the current matrix and proposed matrix, single-family would still be, I believe it's thirty-two feet. Yes, thirty-two. So, currently only townhouses, essentially attached dwellings, which most likely be townhouses. Not, I can't say for certain, but most likely townhouses would have the twenty-foot requirement. This would change it to allow all those other units of middle housing to allow twenty-foot lot frontage.
So, I'm a little bit confused because clearly I have no expertise in this. But this is low density and we're increasing the density. Is that what I'm hearing?
So, they proposed twenty feet for lot frontage. I I wouldn't say they're necessarily increasing the density. They still have to meet the minimum lot size, um, for for any development. Um, this is just make their lot widths shorter.
Right, which would increase the density of the of the housing within a certain area, correct?
I I I don't think so. They're not proposing to change the minimum lot size per se, just the minimum lot width. Now, how that lots are oriented, I can't say for certain, but this would allow them to have a smaller lot width.
Widths?
Right, correct. So, right, right now, at part of the last proposal that was done last year, they took the minimum lot size down to twenty-nine hundred square feet for for single-family and but there's also still for in the matrix itself. It still has fifteen hundred for attached, forty-five hundred for triplex, and then seven thousand for quadplex and cottage clusters. So, the lot width while shrinking, they still have to meet the minimum lot size. So, uh, it's, it may have to be like that.
Are you saying that the square footage stays the same?
Square footage is not requesting to be changed, correct?
That was my question.
Okay. Any further questions? Um, I just have a question about, well, the recommendation at the end. So, you're recommending a continuance, but also recommending an approval, or you're recommending that approval at the continuance meeting? In other words, tonight, we're just continuing and and we're not going for anything other than that because, uh, you know, going through a presentation, I think is kind of is, uh, uh, not anticipated. So, is that correct?
Yes, you're correct. It would be, I would recommend approval out of continuance.
Okay.
Continue hearing. And the applicant, like I said, mentioned or requested the May first.
And once again, they're aware of the hundred and twenty day rule and everything's good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, I have several people that want to, uh, talk about this one, and, uh, proponents and proponents. But since the applicant is asking for a continuance, they're not really prepared to be here and rebut or talk to, talk to all the people that want to talk about that. Go ahead.
I just want to make a couple of things. Uh, so this would be a recommendation to city council. City council would have the final action on this item, and also the applicant is here tonight to speak.
Yes, I'm aware of that. However, if we do decide to continue, this, this is the point I'm trying to make to the audience members here. So, uh, I can o- open the public record and go go through everything. But that just means we have to repeat all the, all the things that you guys are going to say tonight at the next meeting. And it's better to have, uh, a, a meeting like that where everything's fresh in our heads and we don't have to tread the same, same ground twice, if that makes sense. So, um, at this point, we'll open and then close the public record. And we'll get, uh, do I have a motion for a continuance?
I have one quick clarification question.
Go ahead.
We've cited that May first would be the next time, but is that the city council meeting? Has May ninth is the planning commission meeting? What was the first?
It was going to be a special meeting for the, for the planning commission.
Thank you.
Can I just ask another question?
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm concerned that some of the people in the audience may not be available on May first and therefore wouldn't get an opportunity to put forward their point.
Okay. In that particular case, uh, those people who may not be available can have, uh, until that time to submit their comments and written form, uh, to planning commission and will go before us and will be able to read that and and consider their words that way. That satisfy you?
I'm still concerned that people may want to say something this evening and may not want to put it in writing for May first.
Okay.
And Commissioner Dale inquire um, our attendees, if that is the case? If they are willing to put in in writing?
Were I to do that, I'd have to reopen the public record and we have to go through an entire process to do that. So, do I, do I have a motion for a continuance?
Great. Motion to continue. Planning Commission staff report M I M D three two three dash zero zero three forward slash M I S C three two three dash zeros zero zero one two. Continue until May first twenty twenty-four at seven P M in the Public Safety Building for a special planning commission meeting.
Everyone have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Uh, gonna get a roll call vote, please?
Jason Dale?
Yes.
Laney Quinn?
Yes.
Abby Seitz?
Yes.
Chris Wright?
Yes.
Lyndon Newton Curtis?
Yes.
Mike Griffiths?
Yes.
Our motion passes this, uh, uh, M I M D three two three dash zero three and three two three dash zeros zero one is continued to May first. I encourage everyone in the audience tonight who wish to speak to attend that meeting and will be able to give this a thorough going over. Thank you all for attending. Moving on to new business. It's, uh, about the Mill District Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Amendment Presentation presented by Associate Planner Jeremiah Cromie. Making the big bucks tonight.
All right. Thank you, Chair. Uh, again, Jeremiah Cromie, Associate Planner for the record. This is just a update on the west end Mill District. So, this project started back in, well, it started as part of the downtown improvement plan as a recommendation from that on the west end of town here. Uh, I'll go into the map too here in a minute. But what it is, is on the west end of downtown, as part of the downtown improvement plan, there was a recommendation to take an area and basically what is more of a gritty feel to it and add a craft, M five craft industrial district, or also known as the west end Mill District. Um, it would include adding uses of food and related products as well as, uh, selling those items, uh, textiles and apparel, artwork and toys, manufacture of machinery or equipment. So, here's a map of the area. So, you have Hancock here, Main Street up here. And there's, I'll have another map in a minute too, shows some other locations. Um, so, this is within easy walking distance of the cultural center. Uh, jobs is focused on jobs and creating additional jobs while creating kind of a new downtown district, I guess you could say. Um, with locally produced goods, like I said, and then selling on-site. So, more of your not factory tour, but small glass-blowing artisan where you can make it and sell it same location. So, as mentioned, out of new zoning district, uh, titled M five, uh, can do craft industrial and incubator spaces for businesses. Uh, create new minimum requirement for five thousand square feet with zero interior lot lines. And this is a combination of M two and, which is our light industrial, and then C three, which is our downtown central business district zoning. It include limited landscaping and parking requirements. Uh, like I said, this list is not exhaustive by any means. So, the current, like I said, the zoning, you have C three down here. This is Hancock, goes back into the, the one or the, back in the two-way. And then M two up here. And then skirts the corner here. It doesn't include where Papa Murphy's is there. Highlight in the green. And so, here's some just where you guys, some landmarks, the, the mill, Jaylen Valley Mills there. Gym one hundred, you have Ray's Produce, and then Crushed Cellar, which you can see on ninety-nine, and then Barrio Loco down here on First Street. So, this has been a ongoing process. So, it was originally initiated by city council in twenty nineteen to amend the zoning map and comprehensive plan. Letters to business owners about the proposed changes were sent out. Uh, planning commission workshop was held in twenty twenty. I'm not sure if any of you were here at the time. Jason was, Mr. Dale, Chris Wright was here. Okay, so he may be able to tell me more than I know. Two business ownership workshops were completed in March of twenty twenty-one, and then the transportation planning rule analysis was completed in June of twenty twenty-one. Staff did reach out to D L C D about the transportation planning rule, and they agreed that we can use the existing transportation rule so we do not have to get a new one done. So, we did find out about that. Uh, it was originally scheduled for public hearings in late twenty twenty-one, but, uh, it was delayed indefinitely. It looks like due to staffing shortages. The staff presented the city council in January of twenty twenty-four on their work plan as a significant project. They approved that plan. And so, we have started to retake that up as time permits. So, with that in mind, the next steps for this would be just kind of verication of what was the proposed language back when this originally started. Uh, we're pretty close on that at the moment. And then evaluation of issues with state goals and comprehensive plan goals and policies, which we're looking at now as we have time. And then we will solicit that to other city departments for any other feedback they may have. Uh, and then we're doing some additional outreach with property and business owners in the area. And then we have this planning commission update as well as city council update on Monday night. And then due to the regulations being changed, we are going to be required to send out a measure fifty-six notice of changing property rights, uh, because there's two things that that trigger that. It's the parking requirement because C three currently doesn't require any and M two does. It's kind of a split between the two where we re- we're requiring parking in the C three, but it's very greatly reduced. Um, and then the M two is actually getting reduced. And then the other one is because in because in both M, or sorry, C three, some of the residential uses are going away. But you can still do residential as part of the mixed use, or there's a new category called a live work unit where you basically live and work in the same building. Uh, and then tentative schedule for the planning commission is back sometime in August or September for a hearing and then city council for a hearing and ordinance that would put it into effect sometime probably late September or October.
And if any questions or if you'd like to inform me of things that happened back in twenty twenty or twenty twenty one, I'd love to hear them.
Do you have any of the maps of the area as part of your packet there? Maps you were showing. Downtown.
Go back, yeah.
Think that might be helpful for people.
The map identifying the businesses is very helpful.
Well, that's, that's showing where, where the concept of the current stuff and then transferring it to where. And so it's like, okay, where do we, where are we thinking is what I'm talking about.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Helping identify the streets was very helpful.
Cause so.
Five was help.
So Cr- Chris can add anything here if I'm forgetting something, but so as I recall, the idea was is you expand the downtown zone. Uh, what is it? South. So basically second and third street um, to increase the amount of, of potential area to, for new businesses, new commercial, new and, um, that would be commercial. Then you have two corridors that I don't remember if there's a zoning change with that or if it was just transportation. It'd basically be River Street and Blaine Street. And whether there was talk about, um, extending the, the, uh, the phone to railroad track that goes past the skate park. You guys are familiar with that. And then you have like a loop down there and that drives into the area that's down around the mill and around, um, um, you know, the, the, uh, like the Rogers Landing area. And so you have this whole area down there where, where you can build restaurants, you can build bars, you can build, you know, the, the, the craft, craft industry stuff we're talking about, there'd be some area for industrial, there's, you know, uh, you know, regular type industrial, there's the, uh, owner, owner, uh, owner residing businesses like you, you're talking about. I mean, there's all kinds of opportunities and the vision I had, uh, wh- when we're kind of pushing all this stuff is, is somebody in their boat can drive up to Rogers, or, or drive up to Rogers Landing, get out, have lunch, go, you know, do everything. It's a nice day and then go back and go on the river and do all this kind of thing. Where that is available nowhere else until you get to downtown Portland.
Sounds great.
This isn't the Rogers Landing.
No, no, this, this is, yeah, that, I didn't, don't think they have the right map, so, right.
Okay, I'm, just wanna make sure. Or the right map, that's the word.
We had to go to, go to the internet, I think, to bring up the.
Chair Dale, could I ask you, is, is some of what you're talking about related also to the riverfront district plan?
Yes.
Or urban renewal?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's all kind of all, all, all together.
Cause I would imagine that this project and some of those conversations were going on.
Yes.
Same time, okay.
Yeah, there's, cause all those things kind of synergize with each other to make it all happen.
And so one thing to clarify is that urban rule district still exists, still moving forward, but it's still young. It's just, it's just recently finished year one or year two. So it's out of a thirty year term. So, but that does still exist and the, the Newburgh Urban Rule Agency's Citizen Advisory Committee or Nura C A C just, just had their first meeting last month. So that's still getting stood up, but that's still on the table as far as those improvements.
Well, yeah. So with the, with the staffing shortages, you know, from back then, which I honestly, I'd forgotten about it, um, the, 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 um, the chronology there. And, um, you know, what with Co- COVID happening and, and the, the uncertainty of the mill ownership property, I mean, all, it's all a lot of, you know, things, things that need to line, line up, and it sounds like things are actually starting to line up to, to start to make this happen. And it's, it's not, I don't think that we've had people coming forward with this, but it's more like a field of dreams, you know, you build it, it'll come. And, you know, you start to have this and, you know, more people show up and everything starts to get better, so. Chris, am I leaving anything out that you can remember about that?
Um, no, actually, um, uh, transportation planning, um, thinking about using, um, what they call it, uh, not trolleys and.
Yeah, there's something about that.
I think of traditional trolleys from San Francisco. They have over two hundred thousand people that come and just to look at the trolleys every single year in San Francisco. It's a huge, um, draw to the area.
There need to be a lot of street improvements though for how narrow all that is.
But the, um, one of the collaborations, uh, Shaheilum Park and Rec, when they were here, uh, did say they would enter into an intergovernment agreement to help get the cars for that transportation.
That's right. There is, uh, CPRD was talking about some park space, uh, by the skate park there too, that they were gonna do something with, and I don't remember what came of that either, so.
Yeah, and this is a, a great opportunity to actually hook both mill districts together um, through that transportation. Um, an area where you can, uh, do crafting and all that, that stuff from right next also Shaheilum Park and Recreation. That's also known for outreach and classes like that. It's great. I do agree that build it and they will come. I, I am excited, really excited about this, uh, becoming, I don't know, coming into fruition. I remember, uh, Counselor Capri saying, this is not gonna happen for twenty years. And she was so disappointed, and it actually has happened in much less time than that. Um, originally it was thought that all this would develop, it would take over twenty something years to develop. And the day I think the master plan for the river was, um, passed, boom. They were up to selling the mill and it just kind of went from there.
Yeah, right?
I love it, no. Good job, staff.
One thing I'll point out too, in the original proposed language for this M five district, it included more of downtown. We've taken that back out just due to complications with zoning and having to re-noticing and everything. This is the main focus, was the main focus of that. Um, there are some other changes they were trying to make to the downtown standards. We have basically taken that portion out of the, um, proposed mill district or proposed other area. So we're just focusing on this, this area here you see in the green.
Thank you. Uh, there's nothing else from staff on that? We'll move on to other items from staff.
Why don't we go ahead and start with Mr. Cromie? He said he has an item that he wanted to share from staff.
Yeah, so I met with, actually Clay did too, with Counselor Olson. Um, we presented a memo to them on childcare barrier issues that was presented back in November to them. Childcare barrier issues, correct. Um, and what they, they identified back in November. Most of those, um, are not in staff's control. There are two that are, um, including one, um, related to new daycare businesses and industrial zoning districts. There is a house bill, I think it was in twenty twenty one or twenty two, that requires us to permit new daycares in light industrial areas. And our code currently requires, and that's permitted outright, our code currently requires a conditional use permit. So that is one of the recommended changes that we were, we will bring back. The other was the parking requirements, which is based on a square footage. I believe it's one per five thousand right now, right, or, yes. Um, but that was the other one we were looking at and potentially changing to a staffing related to staffing requirements based on other jurisdictions nearby. So that will be coming to council for a request for initiation, and then you would see that and then sometime in the near future. So just give you a heads up on that.
I actually have a question about that. Is, um, at five spaces per each one thousand, is that a state law or was that something to do with a?
And I just wanted to jump in to make sure everyone's on the same page. So what, what they're referencing is something from the memo that was shared with you all on the, on other items of interest. And so this is daycare standards. It's the, one of the attachments to it. Could you say that again, Commissioner Wright? The, the five spaces? That are referenced in the memo?
Oh, Mike, Mike, Mike.
Commissioner Wright, um, off-street parking requirements, Newburgh Municipal Code fifteen point four four zero point zero three zero. Is there any, um, for the five spaces per each one thousand gross feet? Why is this when, when a hospital is only two spaces for each one thousand gross feet? Um, and I was also wondering, is this per O R S chapter of some sort or Newburgh City Code?
So not, well, I mean, the city code is, city code has the current requirements, but I, I'm not aware of a state statute on the required parking. Um, I mean, the state does license the daycares. Um, but looking at neighboring jurisdictions, Sherwood, Wilsonville, McEnville, none of them have anything close to our requirement. They're basically used on how many staff they have or childcare capacity at their facility of how many kids, like one per five or six kids, I believe it is. So that's, that's something we're looking at changing.
And if we, if it was gone down to like two point five spaces with a waiting lane and a turnabout or a one-way pickup exit lane? Um, the average, I looked it up, the average, uh, I'll go for you. I think the average length of a pickup was something like, uh, sixteen feet. Uh, given all the different models, the width of a road, uh, the fart, the biggest one was six point eight feet across. Uh, given those dimensions, the largest dimensions for the average cars, is it possible to do a turning lane and then limit the parking spaces due to pickup time and offs? And then I noticed there was a, a issue with the pickup, A M pickup and P M pickup for trips permitted, round trips for uh, parking traffic issues. Can you comment on that?
Uh, we're still looking at the drop-off pickup. Um, I mean, you can get it also into angle parking. If that's, you know, we do allow that in, in our code. Um, like I mentioned before, it's, the neighboring jurisdictions seem to be based on staff and child capacity um, versus a square footage on the building. And, and most people are dropping off, picking up around the same time, not always, but it, it's something we're looking at. I don't have an answer for you fully on the drop-off pickup lane at this point.
Thank you.
And I wanted to step backwards a little bit, so we jumped, jumped ahead into some of the staff update, but I'm gonna take a step back into the, the calendar portion of it as we're looking forward. So a couple of items as we're kind of looking ahead, so there's a pair, those pair of items were continued, obviously, at this hearing. So May first, you'll have a special meeting. Um, and that was applicant request for that special meeting. Um, for the Springbrook, or Kalina's Springbrook Phasing Modification Master Plan Update, then the annexation on the ninth. Currently, that's the only thing that we have scheduled for the ninth. We'll see if the development code update for the daycare facilities and standards with our other caseloads, if it stays on June, that's still tentative. And so we're just making sure we're balancing things appropriately, but one of the things with, as we look at the, the memo that's got our forward-looking calendar, we're trying to make sure we keep up to speed with all of our current planning, but also pick up some of these items that were either given to us recently or that are still of interest to the city council that we added to that work plan that Jeremiah referenced earlier this evening. And so we'll see stuff like that coming in at different times. Um, then our, our calendar, as far as what we have, kind of looking forward is, I would say still somewhat light. The only other thing as we get past June that we currently have a, kind of tentatively on your schedule is for August. Hopefully with that mill district, this, uh, one, you just got an update coming to you with some of the language for the development code amendment, zoning map change. I did wanna mention a couple of other things that may just be of interest coming up. Actually, those are gonna, I'm probably gonna hit those in my update for the memo, but one of the things that they asked me to update you all on, and I wanna make sure I don't forget it, is that this Monday, I believe she said that there's an economic filing that's required of each of our commissioners. Would you like to give any more details about what we're looking for?
Uh, yep. So you should have received an email from Rachel, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Uh, several emails. Rachel's our recorder, C recorder. And, uh, if you haven't done so, you have till Monday to go on the, uh, Oregon Government Ethics Commission website and file your report. Takes about five minutes, but let me know if anyone needs the link again or anything like that. But just make sure you get it done by Monday.
Commissioner Wright, I have something to add to that. Um, if we use our tablets, it will do an auto fill in and put your email address in there. But that's not what goes in there. It's just your name. It will not let you in. So either you have got to put your email in there and delete out everything but your name and then put your password in and you can go in. Um, or you can just use your home computer. So don't get frustrated. It works.
I find it easier to use your home computer. It's all stored in your browser and we're done. Pass, pass the first time. Okay?
So moving, jumping forward to the, just the, the other memo with kind of the general items, it's something I wanna try and keep doing for, for you all as we move forward through these commission hearings. If there's something that, even if it's not an item that's coming to your commission, but seems like it's fairly related to what you all do, what you evaluate, those sorts of things, then I'm gonna try and share those with you. Um, one item that's not in this memo is, well, two items that are not in this memo. But one, the Historic Preservation Commission is gonna be receiving, uh, Historic Landmark Review quasi judicial item. And in looking at this, this was another one that was a little strange for staff to look at, but when they do their review, it states that they are the planning commission, or they have the powers of the planning commission. I'm paraphrasing, but that's essentially what it says. So they take on duties as long as it's limited just to the Historic Landmark Review. That's their lane that they stay in. But if we run into a circumstance where there's Historic Landmark Review and a conditional use permit, so some other type three procedure that would normally come to your commission, then we might try and host something like a joint meeting. So we talked about that and before speaking with some other folks and, and our city attorneys about the appropriate way to handle this because there was some uh, language that made it seem unclear exactly how that was supposed to be handled, but we think we've got, got it cleared up. Um, but it could be that when things come up like this, that we have those sorts of joint meetings in the future. And there's also been some talk about considering something that might be even a workshop, work session or training capacity for you all to perhaps do something with the Traffic Safety Commission, or perhaps do something if needed with the Affordable Housing Commission. So I just wanted to put it on your radar that there are a number of things going on at the city that seem like they're either, either if we're gonna have to have the Affordable Housing Commission or the Traffic Safety Commission or someone else make a decision item on an item that the planning commission is also gonna have to make a decision on. We may see if we can get those schedules to align. It saves, it saves tons of time to do that, but it also helps. But we don't want to schedule too many special meetings for you all because your time is your time. We don't want to abuse it and ask for too many of them. But it can be extra and interesting context to have you meet with other commissions that are kind of adjacent to your topical areas. So with this Historic Landmark, uh, review, it might just be of interest, so I wanted to share it with you. It's actually gonna be for a review of city hall modifications. So there's gonna be some changes to some windows and doors, and so the planning division is gonna help kind of bring that along and take that and work with our public works department. So part of it is related to the flooding, part of it is related to the buildings empty, so we can do upgrades. But we wanna do it in a sensitive way because it is an historic landmark. Um, some other things that were in the update that was provided to you, short-term rental pro- uh, items, so that got assigned to staff. We want to move to start doing the next steps in that project as soon as we can clear a few other things off our plate. So that's gonna be the bringing things forward. So once we get a few things like this West End Mill District, like, um, perhaps the daycare standards, we're gonna move into things like the short-term rental. So that's still on the radar. We're not actively doing anything now, but it was assigned to us by city council. So you'll see that in there. Um, there is a review later this month by the Affordable Housing Commission. They're gonna be reviewing the first round of applications for both the C E T fund as well, or the Construction Excise Tax Fund as well as the, um, Newburgh Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So both of those are funds that, um, will give for the. So both of those are funds that um, will give, for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, would give grants or loans to folks for affordable housing projects. For the Construction Excise Tax Fund, that's something that could be developer incentives, or it could be um, grants in the form of our affordable housing program funds for those. We do have a few applications that have come in for both of those funds. So we're looking forward to seeing that. Hopefully, they're really great. Um, so and that will be something that the Affordable Housing Commission reviews, and then it goes to city council for final approval. That comes as a recommendation. The if anyone really is interested in urban growth boundary stuff, Newburgh's got a very long history with during urban growth boundary stuff, some of it successful, some of it less so. But the sequential urban growth boundary member project, so that's gonna be moving forward. We're um, so that's something that will um, let me take a step back. So that is something that your planning commission received back in
nineteen twenty-two.
September twenty-two? I know, September twenty twenty-two? Ish, okay. So October twenty twenty-two, your commission last received an update, and that's when you received the housing needs analysis, the economic employment op- the economic opportunities analysis and the public semi-public report. And so that's all the analysis that's done before you go into an urban growth boundary amendment. And so that analysis already went to the planning commission, and so we spoke with our city attorneys as well as with city council, and we're gonna be moving that forward since your commission has already seen it. It's just, we're treating it like a really long pause before it got to city council. So they're gonna pick that back up, move it forward. We expect that to basically go forward as you saw it, to get adopted. And then um, and then we'll see where it goes from there. We'll move into some of the next tasks, but the Department of Land Conservation Development just gave us approval of the work plan for this sequential urban growth boundary amendment. So your next role theory would be going in through uh, tasks two and three. And it's possible that that you may see something like the request for proposal that we send out for consultant services or professional services on that. Maybe it's just something that I share with you so that you know kind of what we're asking folks to do for us, because later steps on those tasks in that work plan, you'll be asked to provide input and to evaluate things. So we're really looking forward to having your input as that moves along finally. Um.
Commissioner Wright?
Um, and that's for a task two, identify and adopt land efficiency measure measures and task three, data analysis and deliverables.
Yeah, those would be the the major components of the urban, but this is a multi-year project. So that is a, those are very broad tasks, so they're big ones. Um, but the way to think about it, or the way that I think about it, and James, James is welcome to chime in after I try and do this, because he's working on this with Scott Siegler, our community development director. But the analysis that is done in task one is identifying what your capacity is and what your demand is. So that's the analysis, that's the numbers. And then before you move into going ahead and and demanding a change to your urban growth boundary, you try and to evaluate things in task two, your efficiency measures internally to see what changes could you make to reduce that demand, so you don't have to gobble up quite so much land outside of the city. And then, once you get to the next part in that, you get to the urban growth boundary and you you can say, we know what our capacity is, we know what our existing demand is, we know what additional things we could do to reduce the demand. And then if we still need more land based on that math, then we move into urban growth boundary. James, is that a reasonable summary? You have anything you want to add?
Yeah, I think I'll I'll just add that um, for this task one, just kind of some tentative dates for you guys to be aware of. Um, staff is planning to give an update, kind of an update on those documents to city council on May sixth. And then have the, tentatively have two hearings on May twentieth and June third. And then kind of just big, big picture for these tasks. Task two is tentatively for summer of twenty twenty-five, and task three is tentatively for fall of twenty twenty-six, so long time horizon for.
That's, so that's a big one, so we'll be working on. And then um, so one of the other things, hopefully, you all have participated or heard about the urban design verification study that is that ODOT has been doing around here. So one of the things, Traffic Safety Commission just received um, details on that. Brett was running that meeting with them. They got a presentation from ODOT, so if you didn't tune in, but that's of interest to you, it'd be great. You're welcome to go back and watch the recording, obviously. It's really interesting. We did get kudos for having a high level of participation from the public. So they said that we had approximately one hundred and fifteen responses that were submitted as part of the online open house. Forest Grove was doing something similar that was launched similarly, and they only had, I think they said fifteen. So we did a good job. So good job, Newburgh. So we, but we like seeing that because you want people to be able to share what their experiences are, what things are most important to them, and hopefully direct ODOT. And since it's not directly in the city's jurisdiction, so good job on on communication from the residents. And then I think the last thing that I wanted to mention is one that's also not on the memo. So we've had a community development block grant that's been in place since approximately twenty twenty-one. And that is gonna be getting closed out before long. They've done five funds draws on that. It's a five hundred thousand dollar grant that goes into affording affordable housing rehabilitation. And yeah, so we're closing up on that, and so there will be kind of a final administrative closure on that that's gonna go to city council. And that's tentatively scheduled for June seventeenth. So nothing for you all specifically, but if you're into affordable housing and just kind of like knowing what's up and what's going on with those, that would be kind of a final drawdown on that. And if there are any other questions on things, I'm happy to answer them, but that's all I've got. Uh, I believe June seventeenth, I'm not looking at it, so it could be off by date, but it would be a, it it would be on a Monday regardless.
There's no questions for staff about any of all those wonderful things. We'll move on to items from commissioners. Anything? Commissioner Wright?
Commissioner Wright, um, I wish to extend gratitude to Newburgh City staff in compiling these staff updates for our planning commission. Uh, your time and insights to the SDC charges and codes and other items as barriers and how to remove them if possible, including pathways I had a potentially and partially addressed, especially in promoting childcare facilities in Newburgh, so our one and two parent workforce can return with ease in an already anxiety-laden time. Um, I commend you. And I also wish to recognize Counselor Molly Olson and her insights to the barriers to childcare in Newburgh, Oregon. And I think the staff looking into it, it was actually brilliant what you guys came up with. I commend you on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and most of those kudos lie with Jeremiah, at least for the the initial research, so thank you.
Any other items from commissioners? Okay. Uh, seeing none, we'll move on to adjournment. Thank you all for your time and meeting adjourned.